Okay, I am finally calling to order the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, November 17th. It is 7:17. So before I start opening or progressing with the agenda, I would like to point out, a full zoning board has five members present. We only have three. So what that is going to do in most cases is prevent us from opening hearings and progressing the way we normally would. But as each agenda item comes up, I am going to invite the petitioners to have what we're going to deem as an informal conversation or presentation. What that will allow you to do is kind of go through the process of explaining what it is you're looking to do. You can get comments from the board members who are here, which should alleviate additional meetings and whatnot, because we have, as a town, fortunately, just recently approved what they refer to as the Mullins Rule, which means other board members who aren't here, if they only missed one meeting, can watch it on late cam, because these are all recorded. So then that can hopefully, assuming everything looks good and the board is in favor of approving any type of petitions, they will be able to vote on it at the next meeting. Now, having said that, if there are additional information, we need, irrelevant as to whether we have a, not a full quorum or not, I mean, these hearings can tend to last longer than one or two anyways, but in most cases, this will allow us to be able to have people who are here tonight to present, make their presentation, get some input from the board members who are currently present, and the town planner, if he has any recommendations or any thoughts, so that we can continue along and not hold anyone up any longer than they need be. Unfortunately, it's not an excuse, it is just a fact of life. This is the way we have to operate, because under mass legislation statute, we do not have the ability to supersede the rules, and this is how we need to proceed. My apologies upfront, but if you want to change those rules, you've got to head north to Boston to do that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want people to speak, and then from the audience, to any other things going on, or no?
I'm going to steer clear, I think we're probably, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're probably going to have to steer clear of having people comment, because what that's going to do is open up, it's going to have the feel more of a hearing, and we don't have the ability to open up a hearing. You will be able to come back to the next meeting when we do have a hearing, and, you know, oppose it, or support it, or make comments, or whatever you want to do. So this is not in any way, shape, or form going to restrict people from being able to comment pro, con, or anywhere in between on anything that comes before this.
You can also call the office or submit something in writing if you have a concern over something you hear about tonight, so that I can then forward the information to the applicant, regardless of which of the three items it is, and, you know, perhaps at the next meeting, whether it's the sign, or it's the addition, or something else, you know, we can have some answers, or have that addressed for that meeting.
So if you come back at that meeting?
You could, yes. That will be the formal public hearing.
And I would want to know what we have to say.
That would be the formal public hearing, so.
Okay, so, as I just stated, because we don't have a full board, we are not going to be able to open a hearing. But first on the agenda is Sign Design Conway Hearing. So again, I'm not going to read formally into the record, but what I would like to do is ask if anyone is here representing Conway, if you could kind of just give us a general overview, and we'll provide any comments that we have already done, or Town Planner has done through his research, so.
Sir Lim, Mr. Chairman, I have some revisions and designs from the Sign Company Sign Design, and showing the change in the road facing sign. As a matter of fact, let me, please, if you wanted to, just move it down. I have more.
We have plenty. Again, we're short, we're short tonight, so we don't need that many.
James Chaysoff of Jack Conway Company. The photo, you see the plan, the design of the new sign that they want to install on the front of the building on Main Street. It's the, if you look on the third, the photograph to the right, the immediate right, you'll see the sign that was there, the old sign right there from the beginning. And part of the company's rebranding process was just redesign of the signs and the logo and things of that nature. The site has been designed by Sign Design. The diagram, the measurements are right there for you to see. I know I was, was sent back for more detail or something, I'm a late stand-in, so I don't have full background on this. But it'll be backlit, I believe. It complies with the width dimensions of Section 6, and that's about it in a nutshell.
Okay.
Just replacing the sign that's in now, or was there?
Mark, I'm going to ask you to provide any comment that you have, or suggestions or whatnot to the petitioner.
Okay, so, in looking at the wall sign, so the total size of the wall sign is 52.2 square feet, if you...
How much was it?
52.2 square feet. That's the entire size of the sign, including the lettering for Jack Conway. So unless I did my math wrong, that exceeds the requirement for a sign, the maximum size of any sign shall be 32 square feet. Now, the internally illuminated portion, so it doesn't look like this drawing is to scale, so the internally illuminated portion is 15.6 square feet.
That's correct.
So that internally illuminated portion does comply with the bylaw, but the total sign size does not. So either the, yeah, something's just not right with the, either the numbers or the scale of this, so that would have to be, the red background would have to be reduced to 32 square feet.
Just the 32 square feet.
Chris, or Chris, do you have any questions or concerns without getting too deep into it?
Is this going to be internally illuminated?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But only the letters, correct?
Correct.
So the back, background, it says aluminum, and it's painted?
Right, that's the middle, the middle photo with the simulated night view.
So the white will be illuminated, the red won't?
Correct.
I don't, I don't have any additional questions, so.
Was a variance requested for the area of the sign, Mark?
Doesn't appear to be.
I think they brought it under special permits provision of Article 6, Section 6.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it spelled out myself.
Correct.
Could it be reposted, because he has to come back anyway and ask for?
Well, I don't know. So we have, so in the new sign bylaw, that's why, temporary signs, hold on.
So under special permits, can't we adjust sizes and requirements within this bylaw?
Yes. Certain things you're allowed to adjust, as long as they don't fall under the prohibited sign section, which is 6.6.7. So if they're under 6.6.7, we cannot grant a special permit or any ordinance for those.
Yeah, I think that's a well-pointed-out recommendation by Chris.
Unless, we can vote on it anyway.
No, that's my point, we can, you may want to revise that, because we're going to have time before the next meeting.
Remise the sign design? No, the wording. When you're...
Actually...
We're okay, right, Mark? We're okay under special permit, too?
Yeah, I think, I think it looks like you could issue a special permit for larger than 32 square feet.
Looking at the original sign, with the old round Jack Conway above it, and then adding the real estate underneath it, it's almost the same size. I don't see much of a difference, other than the color, and then it's just as Jack Conway. So myself, I don't have a problem with it.
No, I agree with you about Chris.
But again, we can't vote on it tonight, but let's just make sure we have the wording right when we come back next month, does that sound?
Sure.
Yeah. Confer with the Town Planner and make sure that the request is correct, so we're able to...
We'll do that.
Vote on it at that point.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Am I pronouncing this correctly, Mr. Chozen? Okay, so, we're going to have that informal discussion. Now, what I will tell you, which, well, I guess for the record, you already know, this is my understanding, that there was an issue with the newspaper, I believe, correct, Kathy, where the town did what we needed to do and got notification out, and unfortunately, the newspaper didn't do what they were supposed to do and posted, so we were going to have to move this meeting out to December anyway. Unfortunately, we don't really have, we don't have an option. If it didn't get posted, it didn't get posted. Again, it wasn't anything the town did incorrectly, it was the paper. Now, having said that, keep in mind, I know you're probably frustrated, but even if it had happened, we wouldn't be able to do this tonight anyways, just because of the nature, like I said at the opening of the meeting, of the way the law stands, we cannot physically open a meeting if we do not have at least a supermajority of the five-member board, so we would have to have at least four members here. That's part of the reason we were delayed, we were hoping we could get ahold of someone else and find out why they weren't here. But it is what it is, so, but what, again, I'm going to recommend you do is have, present to us what it is you're looking to do, we have all the information anyways that you've already submitted, and like you just saw, I'm guessing maybe we may have some additional questions or things we need to know, we can at least get a sense of what you're doing, you'll get a sense of what any concerns the three members who are here may have, and then we can go forward at that point, so.
All right, so thanks for having me here. Joined by my partner, Ashley Gaffney, my contractors here as well, and some friendly neighbors on a budding property.
It's always good to have friendly butters.
That's right.
We usually have the other ones show up, so.
So I'm attempting to replace an old deck that was collapsing, leads to the second floor of my house. We had to remove that because of safety concerns, so there are currently no deck there. The new proposed deck is smaller than the original size than the one that was there before, and it reclaims 17 feet from one adjourned, a butter's property, where it was only three feet from his property line. On the other side, the staircase of the new deck goes approximately three, maybe four feet too close to the other person's property line, with that 20-foot distance, but I'm told that the staircase doesn't count now. So part of what I wanted to, yes, thank you, you know, for letting me present some of this stuff, but the building department hasn't actually explained to me why I'm here. I don't actually know, because if the staircase is not an issue, which they said it was, then that's, then why do I need a special permit? And if the new deck is smaller than the old deck, then why do I need a special permit? And why am I going through all this? And I don't know. Nobody has communicated it to me. I'm happy to have our contractor, and I can answer whatever questions you guys have. I had to hire a surveyor last minute, so that I'd have everything on time, and here we are, so. I think that's all. Did I miss stuff?
So at this point, the deck, or the stairs, stairs and the deck are gone?
They're gone.
They're gone.
I have no, I have no back door, and I haven't had a back door for about three months now.
So you only have one single egress?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's a safety concern.
It also didn't have proper footings and all that stuff. I included pictures.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it was kind of a mess. I have more pictures of, and I had questions about the old deck.
So it's just basically you're going into a side setback situation, and the only setback situation is because of the stairs are coming down into it?
Right.
If the stairs are a problem, I guess so.
Yeah.
And it's a non-conforming law.
Which is a non-conforming for you, suggests determination, I get that.
That's correct. But it's, but it's smaller, the new deck's smaller than the old.
Right.
It's reclaiming property, I'm giving you guys back.
So he's not explaining the non-conformity, you are going into a setback now, so I can understand what the problem is, but I don't have a problem with this at all.
Yeah, thank you. I've never actually received any official document stating the problem. You know, it's, I'm glad you guys see that and you could say that, but I don't actually have a document that says that. I mean, I have a document from the assessors off, the words, you know, we had discussions about it, that I had to go through this process, but nobody has actually sent me any official document as to why I'm here today.
Well, keep in mind, the, everything that's referenced when they tell you, "You have to come to us and go towards another board," it's all contained in the bylaws, so when they reference that, I understand, you may be looking for, listen, can you send me a letter that spells it out, so I have that, that doesn't always?
Not only that, but I believe, personally believe, that 80%, maybe more, of all these problems could have been solved by communication, and I have yet to communicate with the building, the building department.
Well, so you're before the board of the zoning board right now. I'm going to, I'm going to make one suggestion.
Okay.
We'll talk about what we're talking about here, building department is another area of town, so, you know, I would strongly suggest that you stay away from that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
It's a recommendation, you can do what you want, but I'm just strongly suggesting it. So I'm on board with my fellow board member here, I don't see any issues with it, I think you're making it safer, I don't know.
I have no issue.
Okay, you have no issues. Is there anything you want to interject here, or whatnot? Again, it's...
Just so the neighbors don't have to come out, can we hear from them? Again, it's just an informal discussion, you guys have a problem with it?
Yeah, why don't we do this? If you, I'm going to, is there anybody out there who does want to make a comment against this? If there's any particular issue? No, I don't, I'm assuming you don't, you're the one who was holding me.
I'm one less surprise.
Yeah, we're having an informal conversation. Anybody want to have any, any reasons that, or anything they want to point out that they don't like about this project that's going to come before us next month?
Yeah, I'll just say, just for clarification, these are my neighbors in the back property. In my packet, I have letters of support from both of my adjoining, about, you know, the side properties, and that's really the ones that are the issues, but they've, they've given me their support as well, so thank you.
All right, so you have support from the neighbors, you know, no one showed up tonight who was going to potentially be against this. I, have you seen, what ends up happening too, and I'm not going to read any of these into the record, but, because we don't, we aren't having a record right now, but we do get letters from other boards, and there's potentially something that the Board of Health is trying to square away with the septic and Title V, so again, like I did earlier, I would suggest you talk to them and get that squared away.
They won't talk to me. I appreciate it, but they will not talk to me.
Or put something in writing and then just send it to, they have to respond to you in writing, so just send something in writing and send it over to them. It's the proximity to the septic or the Title V situation. I see you've moved it further away, so I would just explain that to them.
Oh, 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 the deck, yes.
The deck.
That's correct. The old deck is sitting on...
Again, I just, I don't want to get too deep into specifics, my suggestion. Chris had a great one. Send an email to them, CC the zoning board, then you'll, you'll be on record at that point. You can take that, like Chris said, send, send a formal request to them to clear that up and CC us on it, and that way we'll have our information forward to December.
Is there any way to get the process moved up faster, like a special meeting? Seeing as how the various departments have exceeded their initial timing of their reviews, and then this mistake was made with the newspaper, is there a way we can convene an earlier meeting so we can move ahead, and my contractor can, you know, we're trying to beat this now.
Understood.
Yeah.
We're here tonight, these three of us, what's that tell you about making sure we get quorums?
Well, once a decision has been made, you can forego the appeal period, and then if an appeal is made, you would have to stop work. That's the legality, so waiting for the appeal period, the 20, plus the 14 days after the hearing. So you are legally allowed to start, and then, you know, at the risk of a stop work order, if an appeal has been made to the decision, so I'll let you know that, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right.
Also, Amy should have taken two weeks to get the headboard done, but I could try to get that done.
I appreciate that very much, thank you. Again, I just want to say...
Listen, we're...
Communication is really the most important thing, it's, when I communicate with people...
Yeah, we hear you.
Yeah, it works so much better.
Again, like I said, you complain too much, remember, you're talking to our board, not other, not anyone else in town, also.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
We'll see you, we'll see you within a few weeks. All right. Well, the next one we can actually act on, although we're not going to do, it's going to come out the wrong way, but we're not going to do much acting.
You can't act on anything related to the, what the hearing's about.
Correct. All we're going to do is, North Bedford Crossing LLC is next on our agenda. We have received correspondence from the petitioner that they would request to continue their hearing until the December meeting, which is on December 15th. So I would entertain a motion, because we can get away with three of us to do that.
So maybe.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, number four, Residences at LeBaron Hills LLC. So I'm guessing there's a few folks in the audience for this one, I'm sorry to possibly disappoint, but I think the only thing we're doing tonight is voting on the peer review.
That's correct.
So you don't, you don't, you don't have to do any, any setting up or anything at this point, not on itself.
I have some additional pictures, I believe, of the board, we also got some additional pictures on it.
You can leave and submit them for the office, but that's...
I can do them.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's better off overall, if we just do the peer review and then you can deal with...
Peer review is not part of the hearing, it's just administrative decision by the board, it's not any sort of decision related to the application, where buildings are, roads, driveways, drainage, or anything like that, so it's just administrative task, so.
So having said that, I'm going to ask the Town Planner to, I know we received some, I don't know what you want to call them, peer review firms, I guess, to, that we can choose from, and everyone, I believe, was informed of those last meeting, and we wanted to wait till this meeting, since we knew it was coming up in a couple of weeks. I'm going to ask the Town Planner, obviously he's had more than enough time to review them, if he has a recommendation of where we are at this point, so.
Any of the three firms, ours, that we, Environmental Partners is the firm that the town uses for a variety of tasks. I've also called, and we received a proposal from Beals &amp; Thomas and from DSC Group, both of which are qualified engineering firms that have done peer reviews for 40B developments, as well as many other types of developments, so.
The ones that said they'd show up at two meetings?
What?
Who were the ones that said they'd show up at two meetings? Was it Beals?
I don't recall, I didn't bring both, I didn't bring the proposals with me.
It was Beals.
It was Beals?
Mm-hmm.
So, well, one of the things I did clarify with Amy after our meeting last week was, again, we choose who the peer review firm is going to be, but it is not out of line, if we're comfortable with all of them, to ask if a developer has a preference. We don't have to go with the preference, but it is fair to ask that. I, we're, we're the ones who chose the three. I personally don't think it's a bad idea, if we have three, that we have kind of been our arsenal, or, you know, in our, in our shed here. If we're comfortable with the one that potentially a developer has a preference for, ultimately, the developer picks it, it's off of our back if there's issues with cost or whatever, anything else involved with that. So I, again, that's just a personal opinion, we don't have, the rest of the board doesn't have to go with that, so I just think it's a easier...
If the board isn't satisfied with the results of the peer review, we can remove them from our, you know, offering them as a, for future developments as well, so, you know, not every, you know, board is happy with the results of the review by every engineering firm that gets hired, so, you know, we haven't used, in this town, any, aside from Environmental Partners, we haven't used the other two, I've used them in other towns in the past, so, but that's, you know, different personnel, time goes by, so, but generally, they're all reputable firms.
Do you have a preference?
I actually do. Really, again, all three firms are qualified. The least expensive was SBC. And from what I hear is that SBC was the original peer review for the community when it was approved early on in 2004, and this is from Outback Engineering, that's what they told me, that SBC was involved in the community before.
I don't know if I was around at that point.
It was SBC, that's what Outback said, that SBC is, and they have the least expensive proposals, so.
I did not realize that they were the original firm, which I think, even though personnel has changed, I think that's a better position for us, for us to be in, to have someone who actually probably has something in their archives and files anyways on this. actually probably has something in their archives and files anyways on this. So, any discussion? Anybody have any questions for Mark or?
The proposals included two site visits and two, two meetings from Beals and Thomas and it was also a recommendation from council and I've also worked with them. I've worked with all three of those. They're all comparable, but if we've already got, they allowed to, for have them to come and explain their findings to the board is imperative.
So, so let me ask this for a second. We can request them to come. I mean, it's just going to be an additional charge to whoever the developer is.
It's just a matter of the cost at the end, then that cost is already included. So my vote would be for Beals and Thomas. That's, that's my reasoning.
So any, any one of these firms may, may have to attend more than whatever the minimum number of meetings. They may have to do more than what they outlined as what their expected review time takes and types of things they may be reviewing. So there may be additional costs associated with all three of these firms. So, because, you know, depending on the complexity of the drainage, letting issues, you know, traffic, whatever the items are, you know, you may want them, may take multiple meetings. So, so just because, just because right now.
The, you know, again, there's, there's, it's not like going to grocery store and saying, listen, it's a dollar for, well, it's not, it's five dollars for loaf of bread and, you know, each loaf is going to be five dollars and that's, that's, that's it. There's, there's no, the proposals aren't necessarily the same when we're using it as a sample is what we're doing now. So even though Beals, Beals is including two meetings and whatever amount onsite, if we say this is going six meetings and we need you here for all of these meetings and they have to come, you know, the petition is going to have to pay for those, so.
They would, they would charge for four additional meetings while if you selected BSC, they charge for five additional meetings.
So the developer's the one who's really running the risk on, listen, if I didn't realize, I got to pay for these extra meetings.
And they, they do have a, you know, a breakdown of addition, of fee, hourly fees for coming here for a site visit, coming here for meetings, additional, you know, work by a senior engineer, junior person, you know, they, they do have that broken down.
Is your concern the fact that the cost looks like it's not the true cost on the other one?
Or is it just? Just a more complete estimate and they, they know that they're all compatible, you know, but.
If we took, let me do this, if we took the numbers out, are you leaning towards one versus the other? And you've dealt with these firms more than everybody, yeah. So is there one versus, one versus the other that you prefer?
So Beals is very reputable and very capable and if they've agreed to come out twice, I think we should, again, my opinion would be to go with them. But again, just my opinion, I'd like to hear from everybody else, so.
Without any personal professional experience with either of them, I don't really base my opinion on experience from other people moving on at this point.
Yeah, my opinion is, again, to what I just said, I don't have nearly as much experience dealing with these types of firms as you would or someone like Mark, but my opinion is I want to get three professional qualified firms, put the money aside, that we know are going to give us reputable service and we're not going to have to question whether things are being done correctly or not. At that point, the developer's paying the bill. If they have a preference, they're going to pay the bill.
I've just never heard of the developer being offered the preference before. It's the first time I've ever heard it. So that's, I guess that's my concern. So it's usually we select it, they pay the bill and that's the whole idea of peer review is to ensure that their engineering is matching up with our engineers' peer review. So, so for them to pick out the firm.
No, 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 we picked out the firm. We picked out three firms.
That's what we should do then. We should pick out.
We picked out three firms.
But we made the final selection.
We do, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add?
You can, you can add.
Anyone who responds with me. BSC is good, BSC is good, I'm happy with either one. So please, you know.
My only thing I can say is I have used Beals and Thomas both as a review, peer review engineer as well as a design engineer. So I've used them in different communities for different things and I've been personally very satisfied with what they've done. So I can't, I've used BSC, but I can't remember exactly full. But their, their work's good too, so.
Well, who wants to make a motion? We're both looking at you.
Well, you know I'm going to make a motion for Beals and Thomas and so, but is there any open more discussion?
Well, we can always have discussion after we second.
All right, so I make a motion for Beals and Thomas.
Do we have a second, at least for the point of?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, we have some minutes to approve and we can do this without a full board.
Can we?
Yes, we can. I've actually confirmed that because this has happened before.
That means I wasn't here for him, so I'm going to have to recuse myself, so it's going to be.
Even if you're, even if you recuse yourself, we can still do it because the minutes, we just need.
Just the one I wasn't.
Majority of the people who are in it, so we get two out of three. So Chris, which one were you here for?
The Bedford Street, the first Bedford Street, two meetings ago.
October twentieth?
Yes.
Well, we can't approve these then.
Okay.
Because I wasn't there either. Can you do one?
Nice try.
I don't think so.
So we'll have to wait. These are just minutes. We can wait on these, right?
Wait on these, so we'll do that next, next meeting as well.
All right.
Uh, do we have any other business or correspondence or anything you need to let us know at this point, Mark?
No, I don't think so. I mean, pretty much we've been mostly involved in trying to get through Monday night, yes.
Well, we got through Monday night, better or for worse. So I want to state a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second. You're second in that?
Yeah, I'm second in that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-five.